Some of them moved outside and got used yesterday.
Oh, it was pretty nice.
The black one right there is for sale. I just gotta find somebody to buy it.
How big is it?
It's an XL. I'm full sized.
Is it hardtail or?
No, it's a 130 rear suspension.
I'm interested. I've been looking for a new bike.
Can you ride an XL? How tall are you?
I'm like six foot. It might be a little big for me. Mine is not.
Might be a little bit of a stretch for you, but it just kind of depends on where you ride and what you expect the bike to feel like. Probably more of a large though.
Yeah, I think that might be.
It's a Revel if you want to go look at their, uh, they're good Colorado company up there in, uh, where they carbon deal? This was R E V E L.
I do like those Colorado companies. I'm glad that we have them still by companies.
Yeah, I try to stay on Colorado bikes, at least, at least companies that have, you know, like the bike that disappeared from the last time we talked is an Orbea, but at least their US headquarters are in Boulder. And they're helping us build a trail, which is awesome.
Yeah. Where'd you go riding?
Uh, we just stayed around the neighborhood. We try to keep it to the concrete paths and stay away from the cars.
Oh, it's a good thing.
We can do pretty well here in our neighborhood. There's quite a bit of concrete around to ride. Most of it's plowed. Some of it gets pretty slushy and icy.
Wonder it's really good to see you.
I appreciate that.
Mayor, how do you can see this piece of ore I found today?
Oh, where did you find that at?
Up in Gilpin. But I'm pretty sure it's gold. Or it has gold in it.
Well, I'd like to see.
Gold, John, we'd see you, uh, see your, your chair still spinning as you left the room.
Process it somehow, but it's cool rock.
I'll just give Scott another minute here to rejoin us.
And while we were waiting, um, you know, some time ago, um, Argo Mines came to us with that, with their situation and I thought we were going to kind of monitor it every thirty or sixty days to see where they were now that we're talking about what we're talking about. Have we done that or do we know what's going on there or we just?
Yes, yes, Art and I, uh, I'm, I'm sorry. I, it's possible that you were not at that meeting, but, uh, we had decided, uh, we, we did extend, uh, the Argo's, uh, $400,000 participation, uh, couple more months.
Okay, but I thought we were going to check with them every so often. So when did we extend it to? I was in on, I remember extending it and I thought we agreed to maybe get an update from them every thirty days or every forty-five days or so.
I, I don't have it in front of me, but it, it seemed like it would have been, uh, like, uh, sometime in April.
Oh, okay. That's so far off. Alrighty, thank you.
You bet. All right, and, uh, welcome to our work session, uh, for, for February twenty-eighth and, uh, the thing that we would like to discuss is the Virginia Canyon, uh, mountain bark, uh, mountain park, uh, mountain bike, uh, uh, trail. Uh, I was, uh, happy that there's only three trails uh, going on. I thought we were starting with one, so it was good news for me. And Jonathan, do you have, uh, more information on that?
Sure, I'm sorry, Mayor. Uh, Mayor, Gary Moore from Comba is here as well. That's the Colorado or Mountain Biking, uh, Mountain Bike Association. Sorry, Gary. Um, we have prepared a little memo for you. I just will really quickly run through the bullets for the public. Uh, the first thing is, like you said, we've got about one and three-quarter mile of trail being built in B Camp right now. Um, we have been pretty lucky this winter with good construction weather to get those trails built and they are on track to be opened in May. One of the things we wanted to talk to you guys about was just that we're thinking about how we're going to open the trails. We'd like to do a soft opening for residents of the city so we can start looking at how they work. Um, we have been working with the Argo team to create some wayfinding signage and we have a plan for a temporary solution and then like a longer term signage plan. On the temporary side, what we want to do is use, um, plastic yard signs that you use for a campaign or something to that effect. Work with the Argo team to make sure we have parking signs and wildlife signs and just the wayfinding directional signage for the park. We can put, um, some riveted grommets in there and we can mount them to posts or whatever that'll last through the season so we can kind of get a good idea how the use needs to happen. And then we have some money in a grant application we just put in um, to do maybe some more wayfinding work and we'll make a better, you know, we're going to keep working on signage for a permanent solution. Um, we have also been working with the Argo on parking. When the Argo project is complete, they'll give us ten spaces of parking on Riverside Drive there. We are going to start with five spaces just because the project isn't complete and it seemed like that might be a good kind of starting point for use. We'll have some other parking available. We've been really looking at where people might park to access the park. This first couple of people is going to be pedestrians and bicyclists primarily, which will be the same once we open. We have a couple of different ways to get to Riverside Drive that we're, that are, you know, potential to be used by people. One is the Twenty-third Street Bridge. You can turn right there and get into the Argo property. We also have the new pedestrian bridge just east of there. And then there's another pedestrian bridge on the Greenway Trail, um, over by Maison de Ski. Um, that can also be used to access the trail system. All told, we have a pretty good amount of parking over there. One of the things we do want to do is protect some of the uses that happen over there so they don't all get used for the park. We will be finding a way to protect CRC Park Parking for people to use that park. I know that that's been a challenge some summers with rafting and everything, but that is our intention and we have, um, some conversations with Interstate. We're also going to talk. We still need to have a follow-up conversation with the PD and everybody to make sure that parking is good. But I anticipate that that park will be limited to just people who are using CRC Park. Also, the visitor center, we've worked with them. They'd like to have kind of an informal trailhead there. And we've talked to them about making sure that they have enough access for their building, but maybe the parking on the far east side of their parking lot might be available as well for users of B Camp. So kind of the anticipation here is that we will be, um, soft opening the trail system in May, maybe possibly early June, just depending on weather conditions and, you know, water on the trails, all that kind of thing. It'll be available to residents of the city. Once that kind of goes a little bit, we'll start looking at opening it up all the way. These first segments, you, oh, go ahead, Gary.
I was just gonna say, I think we're looking at more immediately at a soft open. That was kind of the point is to get boots on the ground, get, get some people walking the tread in and doing that, you know, sort of for the residents. Um, I think we'd be looking at us a, a more official trail opening in May or June.
Yeah, okay. The last thing I wanted to mention is that, uh, there is a lambing season that could be occurring with the bighorn sheep and we have talked to CPW about being sensitive to that season. We are going to continue to work with CPW to make sure that we're protecting the animals up there and that the the habitat, you know, we designed these trails to be, um, specifically protect the wildlife habitat up there. And so that's one of the things we're doing here. So we need to watch that situation. Um, we're also looking for some direction from council about naming these trails. We're guessing that climbing segment one, two, and three isn't going to play super great with the public. We'd like to have something a little bit more fun and a little bit more Idaho Springs. So we had a couple of ideas we, we thought you might like. Maybe we could put it to a community kind of conversation or, you know, something like that. It's a good opportunity for us to make this Idaho Springs Park and make sure it stays that way. Um, we're here for questions, so please let us.
Kate, I see your hands up.
Yeah, I'm sorry that you guys can't see me. I am here. Um, what, uh, Gary, what, and John, what are, where are the access points right now that if you need boots on the ground, did like go over the trail? I would certainly volunteer me and my husband.
Yeah, the, the only access point right now is through, uh, it would, what will be the main trailhead, trail entrance at the southern end, which is from the upper bench there on the Argo property.
Okay, uh, just let me know if that's something that you genuinely want us to do down here because we, we, you know, we have an interest as we are on Wall Street, um, kind of just, uh, to the west of the trail.
Yeah, any, anytime, you know, from our standpoint right now, what we've been waiting for is for the construction to not be right above the part that's already constructed, just in case the, the mini X or any of the guys working up there dislodge rocks. But we are really this week with the weather we're expecting this week, going to be moving more directly towards that main center point that we're calling the hub that, uh, some of the trails branch off of. Um, so when we get to that point, then we feel like that it will be completely safe for people uh, to go ahead and get on that trail on the lower end and start kind of walking it in.
I will remark that I live on Wall Street and there's nothing that on Wall Street that's completely safe. We just had a forty-pound rock come down and hit our house. So it's just the nature of this beast over here.
Yeah, we just, we just don't want that to be our fault.
I know, I get it. I get it.
All right, Jared.
Hi, Gary, correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, in this early phase before we really do our kind of soft opening, the Argo just wanted, uh, us to stop in and into the mercantile and give them a heads up that we'd be up there. Is that still the case? Do you recall?
I think that was more about the construction team and, and I think once we have the temporary wayfinding in place, uh, hours established, make sure people know, you know, where they should walk and where they shouldn't. That I, I think that they're not looking for during the soft open to have every, every person from the, from the city that wants to come walk up there, stop in and, and bother them. So I think that was really more a matter of, of just kind of while we were getting construction started. So they'd have some sense of what the vehicles were about and who they belong to. And then the, the John talked about parking. I think he may have left out the fact that we're actually working with our, uh, cartographer. I think is a too fancy a name for him. Um, to put together maps that will show where the trailhead is in the city as well as primarily identifying the proper places and preferred places to park. So that will be, you know, an, an illustrated map, not just, you know, sort of a, a bulleted list on a website someplace. It'll be something that's available to people more readily.
All right. Well, that sounds good, Gary. You know, uh, I know as the season, uh, progresses, people are going to love this mountain bike park. And, uh, I have had reports upwards of eighty or ninety cars are enjoying, uh, some of the busier weekends, uh, over there on the Floyd Hill uh, trails. So I'm just saying, uh, I could see parking being a, a major issue and I think some, uh, some good mapping to show people where parking is allowed and not allowed would be a very helpful tool.
Yeah, I think it's, it's going to be a little bit before you see that influx of mountain bikers. That's going to be tied completely to this grant request that we put in last week as well as the Argo funding. That's really going to be the funding that allows us to start building uh, the downhill bike specific trails. So in the meantime, it's really going to be a hiking only trail. You're, we're not going to encourage people to take their bikes up it because the only place to you know, you could just come straight back down the trail and, and really this trail was designed to not have that type of traffic on, uh, uphill bikes only. So this will be a a hiking only situation and we won't really run into an influx of cars. Um, you know, at least until the hiking trail is fully open this summer. And we'll see what other trail construction and, and other trail spurs are going to be, you know, coinciding with that by the end of the summer. But yeah, you're spot on. I mean, we, we open, helped open the trail system up in Blackhawk uh, two summers ago. Um, I think man pandemic timing is really getting on me lately. Um, so last summer was when we opened it to, uh, opened the official bike trails there and really saw the influx. And their trailhead holds forty-nine cars and it was overwhelmed almost immediately. So, uh, being prepared for fifty to seventy-five cars, uh, at a minimum on peak times is really the conversation that we've been having around. Where, where do we find that parking? How do we help people find the parking and get them from those areas over to the trailhead on the segment routes?
All right, uh, hey, uh, questions?
I was just gonna say the same thing you were Chuck that I, you can have the best laid out plans for parking and then you just have to see what happens and then improvise and I could see something like this exploding a little bit. I'm excited about getting it open, but I think we could get a lot of people that are interested in it.
Yeah, and I, I think there is a qualifier is important, so it'd be hiking only at least, you know, in the beginning. And, uh, it'll give us some time. Uh, you know, hopefully some more, uh, uh, grant money and some more funding uh, comes available, uh, so we can, uh, complete the trails as planned. Uh, Lisa, I, I saw your hand up.
I actually, I have a couple of questions. Thank you, Mayor. Um, with the four hundred thousand that, uh, you all mentioned about from the Argo and I wasn't with council, so I didn't see that meeting. Is that money just for the trails?
That's for the Argo. Well, yes, that is money that has been dedicated to the trail system on B Camp. So that could include signage and trash cans and all that kind of thing. We want to create, one of the things that we're really trying to do with this trail system is to build it with the amenities of a city park, um, so that we, we can control its usage. You know, there was a lot of things happening up there that were problematic for the city. There was some informal trails that had some, um, features that were a little bit sketchy. And then there was also some illegal dumping happening and some illegal shooting range and things like that. And so this is just a better way for us to manage the impacts of that. So those funds are to be used just for maintenance and upkeep of the park. So we, we have some intentions to create, you know, some overlooked spaces with benches and, um, you know, the trash cans, want to have bare proof trash cans up there and then a good signage plan. Um, those are kind of the elements that we've been thinking.
Oh, that's great. Um, the reason I ask is when Gary said that he, we ought to be prepared for seventy-five visitors on a peak weekend, my thoughts were, will that include once the gondola is going? I don't know if the gondola is going or?
When that happens, there's going to be, there'll likely be more traffic, but the Argo has plans to build a parking deck on their property. That will, that will serve that traffic need. Um, Jared, Gary, not Gary and I also identified some parking areas in the city that would be appropriate for the use of this, um, this facility now. So I think we've identified in that area and Jared, you might have a better account, but I know it's at least sixty spaces that we can use. One of the benefits of our parking management program too is it's very, very nimble. So we can change what we're doing like at the drop of a hat. We may, uh, you know, we can, we can do a lot of things here, but we need to kind of see what that traffic looks like. And so I think the plan right now, I think is a pretty solid one. I think we just need to make sure that everything is functional and then if we need to address it a little bit, we can do that.
Oh, that's, that's very reassuring. My last thing is for the naming of the trail. I really love the idea of community involvement. Um, I think you ought to actually do like a survey or a lottery or something, but maybe with some parameters so that we don't end up with like Traley McTrailface, like Bodie McBoatface. Um, but I love that idea because I think naming it after people or places in the community is a really good idea.
I've been trying to talk Gary and Jared into the name Bumpy Chuck Norris for one of the trails, but.
We're, uh, we're, we're doing something similar right now with Blackhawk because we're, we're going to build a new trail up there this summer. And we've asked the people that are contributing to that fundraiser to give us, uh, some input on that trail name as well. With the idea that the city gets final choice of what the trail is going to be, but we did lay out for them. So we kind of steered them a little bit in a direction that said, you know, it, it needs to fit in with the city's either mining or casino theme. And if there could be some kind of a tie-in with the major sponsor, which in this case is Orbea Bikes, um, that, you know, the bonus points for that as well. So we've gotten some, some pretty interesting answers. Some of them can be repeated, some can't. Um, but i- in general, it is kind of nice to get that, you know, the, the, the community involved in that conversation. Um, so yeah, I would say, you know, doing some kind of a survey or having something where people, once they've gotten a chance to start using the trail especially, that, that maybe they can come back to you with some ideas on is, is great. Uh, we don't really have any trail names, uh, for the whole system yet. Um, but obviously the one that's, that's the most glaring is the climbing trail that we're building now, which is, is just called segment one, two, and three for the hiking, for the climbing trail. Um, so it is something that we're going to have, uh, I forget what the number is. There's roughly six or seven different trail segments that are all going to need some kind of a name. And obviously establishing that theme, you know, helps a lot a- as far as that goes. Um, I wanted, there was something that John was talking about that I was gonna, oh, it was the timing of, of these trails. Um, we still have a, a, a window here where if the latest grant application and the Argo funding all come through, you know, by the end of March or sometime in April, pretty good chance that we could start on the other trails, the bike specific trails this summer and have a system that was available without the gondola, but open to bike travel, you know, uphill on the, on the climbing trail and then downhill on one set of trails from top to bottom. There's still a reasonable chance that that could all come together by the end of summer, early fall. Um, obviously the gondola won't be in place, you know, best case scenario for them, I think is fall twenty twenty-three before we would see that full influx of people that were not only wanting to use the mountain park, but also, uh, you know, take advantage of the new gondola and those amenities as well. So we're going to get a ramp up period here with the hiking trail opening and then maybe some bike trails this year. Definitely bike trails the following summer and then you add the gondola to that. Yeah, later in the year in twenty twenty-three. So fortunately, we're going to get a little bit of a, a ramp up here in terms of the, the cars that are expected to be coming to town.
All right, uh, hey, I want to ask, is everybody okay with the, uh, public input idea for, uh, naming the trails? Okay, I'm, I'm saying, uh, uh, everybody give me a thumbs up here. So. Okay, uh, we'll go, uh, we will absolutely will go that route. Uh, anything more, uh, on the, uh, on the mountain bike park?
Yeah, I, I did want to ask about, um, the parking. Is that okay, Chuck?
Oh, absolutely. Sure.
So, uh, we've been talking about parking spots and we've been talking about, um, an influx and we're going to tweak it when it happens. Um, who's going to be watching this and kind of tallying what the, uh, turnout is on a daily basis? So that we really do know what's happening up there. And I mean, what entity in our city is in charge of this?
It's going to be partially a partnership, I think, is what we're going to have to do because people are around at different times. I think I want to make sure that residents feel very comfortable telling me any problems that they have in nearby residential parking areas or any other parts of the city that are experiencing problems related to this or that maybe there's something contextually sensitive that we need to change with the parking management. I will be watching when I'm there for sure. The Argo team, we had some, we need to finalize that conversation and make sure that they're kind of having a eye on it as well. But I hear what you're saying and I think that what I could do is develop a quick plan for exactly what that looks like. And if you have any insight, I know you're, you're right there. So if there's any insight that you might have about a good way to make sure we get those counts, I'd love to build that into or if anybody, you know, anybody that would like to participate in that.
Sure.
Oh, go ahead, Kate. Are you done?
No, I just wanted to remark and this is going to be completely an aside. I, I just think that sometime in the future, depending on the outgrow on the Argo, the gondola and these trails, is that there might be a time where we have to privatize that part of the neighborhood just so that we don't have flux into the neighborhood. There's a easy gates where you have stickers on your windows and Sunnyside would be one of those neighborhoods. Riverside would also be one of those neighborhoods that'd be hugely affected. So just something to keep in mind. It's a very simple, non-obtrusive way to kind of keep people out of the, the residential areas.
We have some methods with our system too that we can utilize. So, um, what I think we should do, maybe Jared and I can look at and, um, if you're interested, anybody who has any feedback on this, but we could look at some of those residential areas that might be most effective and are affected and just think about the management plan for them and we will come up with a policy for that, for how we'll handle that.
Thanks, John. Thanks, Chuck.
Uh, Lisa?
Okay, thank you. Mike, uh, Mike, it's more of a comment, John. Uh, I think when we do the soft opening, we start to see even with just the hikers, more people. I think we have to be very clear with the residents in Sunnyside and Riverside about what's happening because parking here is banana pants and people notice when there's an influx of cars. So what you said, John, about wanting people to be able to contact you, I think we need to make that very clear that you are open for that discussion, you know, regardless of what the discussion is.
I will make sure that ours every week. That's something I try to put out in the community all the time. So it's always good to just reinforce messages and I'll make sure that we do that. Um, I want to make sure, one of the things that I want to be careful about, and this has come out in our task force work and all of our engagement, is I want to make sure that whatever system we use to manage vehicles doesn't lead to any sort of altercation between people. Um, some systems are better at avoiding that and some are not as good. So what I would like to do is I will, uh, I will make sure that our information is very public. I'll make sure Interstate has that as well. And we can look at, start, or we can just start looking at how this plan goes from communication to just managing that traffic when there is a, you know, somebody's going to do something wrong at some point. So I just want to make sure that the workflows for that, when that happens are clear and that we have good response times for how to manage it. So I will, I will, I know we need to get a really clear, maybe I could, uh, come back to a work session before the opening mayor and we could, um, detail some alternatives for direction.
All right, uh, anything else? Well, thank you, everyone, and I'll see you back here in about five minutes for our, uh, our regular, uh, city council meeting. See you in a few. All right, I'll give Kate about, uh, one more minute here. She seems to have dropped off. Oh.
No, I'm here, guys. You just, I don't, I'm here. All right, I got it.
Okay, all right, good. Uh, hey, I'd like to welcome everybody to the, uh. February twenty-eighth, uh, twenty twenty-two's regular city council meeting. And, uh. Going to call to order, so three, but before we get rolling, uh, I just want to say, Wonder and Jimmy. Uh, you and your families have been in our thoughts and prayers. And I would have been very understanding had you not been able to join us this evening, but I am very thankful that you're able to attend.
Thank you.
Uh, and with that, I'd, I'd like to ask for a roll call, please.
Mayor Chuck Harmon. I think there's a pause.
Here.
Excellent. Art Caca Bailey.
Here.
Kate Collier.
Here.
Scott Pennell.
Here.
John Curtis.
Here.
Jim Clark.
Here.
Lisa Manifold.
Here.
Thank you.
All rise, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the Republic. For which stands one nation under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. All right, we have an agenda before us. Uh, I have a motion, please.
To approve the agenda for February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two at seven PM.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, uh, does anyone tonight feel to have a conflict minute? All right, hearing none, I will move on to approval of the minutes. Uh, do I have a motion?
I move to approve the minutes from, uh, February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you. Are, do you have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? And all those in favor, uh, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, uh. I would like a motion for the approval of the bills, please.
I'll move to approve the bills to February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two.
All right, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second, uh, is good.
I just had a question on page three, the top, um. WUSA twenty, uh, two, 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 one, zero, six. Just, I don't know what that is. I'm just trying to get clarification.
Yeah. Yeah. wastewater treatment plant location, site location application.
What is that?
Do you happen to know?
Uh, Mayor and Council, that was a site application for chemical distribution. We have to add that to our discharge permit. So of course the state charges us another fee to, uh, look at the application. And then if they approve it, then they'll assess a fee for the final application.
Well, thanks, John.
I did, John, I appreciate it. Uh, any more questions? All right. Oh, I'm sorry, Lisa.
That's okay. On page five, about halfway down, HTR Engineering, there are two invoices for the mobility hub. Are those for potential plans? Will we be seeing those?
The HCR is working with us to facilitate the process. They're not designing the actual structure. That's kind of being done by Walker Consultants right now. But they have been working with us to talk to CDOT and to kind of manage, you know, engineer to city language kind of things and all those processes. So. But there will be plans for the parking structure when that is completed for council review.
Okay, great. Thank you, John.
Any more questions? Hearing none, no roll call, please.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes.
Art Caca Bailey.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Scott Pennell.
Yes.
John Curtis.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
All right, thank you. I'll move over to, uh, public comment. Do we have any tonight?
Mayor, we do not.
All right, then, uh, I'd like a motion for resolution number three.
I'll make a, uh, I'll move to approve resolution number three, series twenty twenty-two. A resolution adopting an updated amended City of Idaho Springs fee schedule.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second, uh, any discussion? All right, uh, hearing none, no roll call, please.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes.
Art Caca Bailey.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Scott Pennell.
Yes.
John Curtis.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Thank you.
I know our city attorney is not with us tonight, uh. City Administrator, uh, stating, uh, staff report submitted with no request for action. Like to move down to, uh, Administration Department, Assistant City Administrator.
Mayor and Council, you have my staff report with two requests for action.
All right, I see those two requests for action. Uh, do I have a motion on number one?
I'll move to approve the submission of an, an energy impact assistance fund grant application. In an amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars with a minimum fifty percent project match to the Colorado Department of Local Affairs DOLA for re. Rehabilitation of the park grounds at Carnegie Library.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mayor, I have a question.
Sure.
Is this the, um, is this the rehabilitation of the park grounds that has already gone through the HPRC? I think it was last spring, early spring it was. I see Jared nodding.
Yeah, and, uh, you know, so we're, we're hoping to go fifty fifty, uh, on this one.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Right, Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes.
Art Caca Bailey.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Scott Pennell.
Yes.
John Curtis.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, the skin item, uh, do I have a motion about the Innovative Housing Opportunity Planning Grant?
I'll move to approve the motion to approve the submission of the Innovative Housing Opportunity Planning Grant Application. In the pa- in the amount not to exceed two hundred thousand with a minimum of twenty percent match. To the Colorado Department of Local Affairs for technical assistance related to identifying. And implementing strategies to improve the housing stock in Idaho Springs.
And they.
Scott, do I have a second?
I think that was twenty-five percent, Scott. I'm sorry.
Oh, twenty-five percent, sorry.
Right on.
Well, that's, that's okay. I mean, I'm glad you picked up on that because I thought it was my internet cutting out. That's twenty-five percent.
Well, and I'll go and.
And, uh, do I have a second? Okay, uh, motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah. Um, I'm absolutely a hundred percent positive. We've done similar studies in the past. It seems like a lot of money that we're talking about to. I mean, let's be really fair. We already know, I mean, isn't that part of a comp plan and the citywide plan to like. Have already put down on paper where we can find possible places for housing. I mean, what is this money going to get us? And I guess is my long. Question, uh, winded question.
Eric, this is a result of House Bill twelve seventy-one last year. That is a bill that the state passed to try to implement some strategies to. Create better situations to not necessarily build affordable housing, but attainable housing in communities. What they did is create a bill of, um. Potential strategies that a community could use. They could include everything from water bill. Credits and things like that to density stuff and things like that. So there's like twelve or fifteen different strategies that a city can use. To maybe improve their housing stock in a community. There's also a regional potential approach to this as well. Where you can do site selection, you can do planning review, you can do a whole bunch of things. The idea though is to set up the city so that when funding comes from the federal government for housing, which is supposed to be coming in the next year or two. We have the strategies in place in our code to allow for that development to occur. I put two hundred thousand dollars as not to exceed because there's potential for us to, to apply. Regionally with the county and the other municipalities in Clear Creek and potentially also with Gilpin County to look at. A holistic approach to how we, how we do housing here and in our area. But also we have a need to do a local thing. So I really think that if we do a local plan, we're probably going to be closer to the neighborhood of sixty thousand dollars. But this conversation has been kind of evolving and I wanted to make sure we had some room there so that we could look at different strategies to apply over time. The grant is due on the fourteenth, and so it's, it's something that, um, DOLA had brought to us and said, this is something that is going to let you get more money in the future. And you should look at this in your code. Yeah, one of the, one of the downsides of it is we can't do an internal review to use the DOLA funding. We have to have a plan. So this is similar to a comp plan, but it's more like a plan review to look at some of these strategies. Some of them you guys have already taken on. Such as ADUs and things like that, but there's also. A host of other things that we could look at to try. We just need to implement like one of them to be eligible for state funding for further, for their housing projects.
Kate, that was a good question. And, uh, that was a very good answer.
It was a good answer, John. Now you maybe really have to think about my decision. I hate that.
And, uh, do we have any further discussion? Uh, yes, John.
Oh, what funds is coming out?
I, I, I'm sorry, John, uh, there, there was some slow internet there.
What, what funds is coming out?
I. Would it be all right if I just follow up with Andy before answering that question and we get that answered to council? I know that that's an important question. It's a twenty-five percent match. Um, I would. I'm not a hundred percent sure what the answer to that question is.
All right, we'll make sure we follow up on that. Um. Well, I, I have a motion in a second. Uh, could I, uh, get a roll call, please?
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes.
Art Caca Bailey.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Scott Pennell.
Yes.
John Curtis.
No.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
All right, um, moving to, uh, Deputy City Clerk, uh, says, uh, note staff report submitted, uh, however. I do see what a lot of, uh. Are going to be facing with, uh, with citywide closing of stores there on, uh, May thirteenth. Looks like we're having to take the business to Evergreen, right?
I'm not quite, sorry, I'm not quite sure, um, if a decision completely has been made and I've been kind of out of. The loop for a little bit and I know that they were going to work around and speak with Andy because of course they would love to continue. To get our business, but to make it convenient for the city there across the street. So.
to get our business, but to make it convenient for the city there across the street. So, you know, they're trying to work on some maybe innovative ideas on how to make it still workable, even though they'll be in Evergreen, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, yeah, I, in fact, I was asking the folks over there. Uh, it sounds like a hard date. They're May thirteenth. They're, they're out of here. But maintaining the, uh, the location in Evergreen, and I did hear some out of the box ideas. We'll see what, uh, what they end up, uh, coming up with, but I know we're an important, uh, for them.
Absolutely, you're right.
All right, uh, community development planner, uh, uh, Jared, you don't have anything for us, do you? Okay.
No, not this time. Thank you.
All righty. Then, uh, finance officer, I, she's not here tonight. Police department with a request for action there. Hey, chief, how are you?
Evening, mayor, council. Uh, you have the staff report and also one request for action.
All right. Do I have a motion on the police department's, uh, vehicle?
I'll move to approve the, uh, the request for a purchase of a new police outfitted patrol vehicle, total cost of fifty-two thousand five hundred and seventy-four from line item twenty-one dash zero zero dash six zero one two.
All right, have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. Uh, discussion.
Chief, what do you, what do you get, sir?
Um, well, we're gonna keep it simple and just continue with the, the Ford Explorer, and, uh, it seems like it's been a, a very reliable vehicle for the most part. Um, so. That's, that's what we're having.
So, turnkey, we're at fifty-two thousand five seventy-four, like, felt like your pickup almost, then, yeah?
Uh, yeah, the, unfortunately, the, you know, as we all know, uh, with, with the pandemic and costs have gone up considerably. The, the purchase price is, is the staff report indicates is, uh, the base price is thirty-nine thousand and eighty-three dollars, but then we have to outfit it with a lot of new equipment, but then we're also going to be pulling equipment out of another, uh, Ford Explorer that we're going to be retiring. Uh, we could pull a lot of it, not all of it, uh, because they're not exactly the same specs, but that's, uh, one of the ways to save money. We had budgeted fifty-five thousand dollars.
Well, it, it, fifty-two thousand five hundred and seventy-four bucks, sir, I think that, uh, you did, you did really well at a turnkey emergency vehicle that, you know, uh, myself and everybody else in the city depend on for, for our safety and, and also otherwise, but uh, so one quick question, is it EcoBoost or no?
Yes, it is.
It is EcoBoost.
Yes.
Okay, Matt, thank you.
Yeah, chief, I want to thank you for, uh, I did notice, uh, reusing, uh, some components to save us some dough. Uh, that was a nice move, and, uh, you know, this probably isn't news to, uh, Chief or Jimmy, but I gotta tell you, I was looking at the specs, and I was surprised, ten-speed automatic transmission. That, that's pretty amazing. Really is, so, uh, Kate, I see you have your hand up.
I just want to know what chief was gonna do with the old vehicle.
Yeah.
So what we can do is we can, once we get all the equipment out of it and, uh, get it basically stripped down, I can get with Jonathan and we can look at, uh, potentially auction, auctioning the vehicle and see if, uh, we can get anything for it. So that's, that would be my intention with that vehicle. Council will hear a request for ma, for action fairly soon on, on, uh, former chief Malanca's vehicle. Uh, we're, we're likely to donate that to the fire department. It, uh, it's not salvageable as far as, uh, the transmission and so forth.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, uh, any more discussion? Okay, hearing none, now roll call, please.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes.
Art Caca Bailey.
Uh, yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Scott Pennell.
Yes.
John Curtis.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along to, uh, public works, uh, John Bardoni.
Uh, mayor and council, you have my staff report with one request for action. Also, uh, just so you know, they were slated to move the Scott Lancaster Bridge this weekend or this Monday and Tuesday. That's going to be postponed till the seventh and eighth. And looking at the weather, I doubt that it's gonna happen on those dates either, so whenever I find out something, I will let you know, but it's one of those kind of moving targets. Yes, sir.
Hey, Jim.
Yeah, John, kid. So I talked to Mark Conrad, the, uh, uh, everybody knows Mark. We call him the legend. Um, maybe you can explain to us as well as council, the rest of council that that, uh, so what, what it entails to move that bridge, kind of an interesting fact that so the, the crane that to move that bridge along because C dot won't give a lane of traffic up on I seventy during peak times or, or any other um, time then. So that, that crane comes in on eight semi trucks. That one single crane, so it's worth eight and a half million dollars. It is a six-hundred-ton crane to move that that memorial bridge for the, our city to the south, tower of many feet, thousand feet, or whatever it is, John, my close on that.
Yeah, um, what I understand is there's actually about thirty-two support vehicles for that single crane. It's the largest crane that Duffy has in Colorado. And it's a huge hydraulic crane. Um, so like I stated in my staff report, there, if they ever do move it, they're requesting that people watch it from the parking lot over at the wastewater treatment plant because there'll be no room for vehicles or people over there. And of course, they certainly don't want anybody around that bridge or the crane when they move it. So hopefully that happens soon. Um, what they're gonna do is currently, you know, it spans the river. They're going to move it about a hundred and fifty feet to the east on two piers that are over the dirt, and one reason is, um, it's starting to deteriorate. And the abutments over the bridge are starting to deteriorate, so they want to get it moved. But that'll be just kind of a kind of a roundabout. You go across the bridge, turn around and come back and go across the other bridge to get onto the Greenway Trail.
Right. So. Well, I, I just wanted to make it known of like what a, like engineering feat, everything was put together and the equipment it took that, um, i- if by chance, everybody involved, don't, don't take this, this particular move for granted of and appreciate the, you know, what, what it does to make things like this happen to uh, preserve such an important thing to us, our city, et cetera, that this is a really, really, really big deal and how fun it'll be to, you know, be part of it. And, and if you can, watch it all transition and watch these thirty-two support trucks bringing this thing in it, you know, eight and a half million dollars to make sure that, um, it, everything that we expect of is taken care of. So just a really cool thing, man. So.
It is.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you, John. Um, could I get a motion for the, uh, Montane Pump Station, uh, Emergency Generator?
I, I'll move to approve the, uh, uh, eighty-nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars to Fisher Construction for the installation of the Montane Pipe Station Emergency Generator and Transfer Switch from line item, uh, number twenty-five-four dash seventy-two dash seventy-three twenty.
Okay, do I have a second?
My second.
All right, motion and a second. Uh, any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes.
Art Caca Bailey.
Yep.
Kate Collier.
Yep.
Scott Pennell.
Yes.
John Curtis.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, moving down, uh, I don't think we have anything for, uh, wastewater uh, or committee or, uh, city clerk treasurer. So I would, uh, like to, uh, make a motion that we appoint Rachel Purry to H P R C for a four-year term. And do I have a second?
My second.
All right, motion and a second, uh, discussion.
Did we want Rachel here to, to be on the meeting for that? She's not, I just texted her. She's, she's not, she's not watching it, so she doesn't know that she's appointed.
Oh.
Uh, wait. Uh, mayor and council, I spoke with Rachel, uh, this evening. She emailed me and asked if it was a requirement and, because I've been out of the loop, I did not get back to her in time. Um, I did call her to see if she was available, and she just picked up her mother that she hadn't seen in a couple years at the airport and is having dinner with her mother. So that's why she's not here.
I see.
I wasn't sure, though, Wonder, in the past, it was a requirement that they'd be here for, um, that acknowledgement, that's all.
All right, well, Wonder, thank you for touching base with her. I appreciate that.
Thanks, you're welcome, of course.
Um, any, uh, further discussion? And all in favor, uh, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All right, please, opposed? All right, uh, hearing none, uh, I'm happy to, uh, welcome Rachel. She may see this later, uh, to the H P R C. And, uh, I see Patty's not here with us tonight, but, uh, I would like to make a motion to reappoint Patty Tyler and Megan Vickers to H P R C for an additional four-year term. Do I have a second?
My second.
All right, uh, motion, second, uh, discussion. I would like to say, I think both of them have been absolutely wonderful. And I'm, I'm really glad that we could, uh, retain for, uh, for some time. I did note that, uh, Megan, uh, probably will not be with us, uh, for a, a long period of time, but I, I just thank both of them so very much, uh, for their generosity with their time and really doing their jobs well. Uh, any further discussion? Then, uh, all those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, and, uh, moving on to a date for council retreats. Um, I'm pretty open. There, there's some eight tier, uh, in your packet. And I'm just wondering if we could kick this around, what works, just want work, what works best for everybody. Let me ask you, are there dates that you see here that will not work?
Four-eight and four-eleven.
Four-eight and four-eleven, okay.
Uh, four-twenty-five for me won't work.
Okay. All right, that looks like we're looking at Monday, three-twenty-eight.
Um, let me check. I'm still trying to check my schedule. Chuck, hold on.
Oh, oh, yeah, no, no, no problem. I am in no way trying to rush the meeting. Uh, this is just gonna be one of our faster meetings. There, you know, just because it's a smaller schedule, so. Scott, you go right ahead.
Uh, I think I'm available that day, the twenty-eighth. Let's see, that's.
Yeah.
Now, is that like the nine to two, like, I mean, what's the hours?
I think I'm available all those days, Chuck, from it looks, but.
And, and Art, to answer your question, I do believe that we were looking for, uh, time like, uh, nine to two, uh, nine-thirty to two-thirty kind of a thing.
Do we know where, or that, that's yet to be determined?
Uh, no, you know, I, I don't think we had, uh, we had planned where, um, a lot of times we get an invite, uh, for, uh, a certain room at, at a restaurant. In the past, we've even had it at, uh, Blackstone River Ranch, uh, and, uh, you know, City Hall is even a, a possibility, so, uh, my, my main concern tonight was to see if we could agree on a date, and I appreciate you paying up the time because that's very important to a lot of folks, and I think you're, you're, you're close with that, like nine-thirty, two-thirty kind of a thing. So, uh, if everybody's agreeable, we will plan on having the retreat on, uh, March twenty-eighth. Starting about nine or ten, and, uh, I would think we'd get done about two or three. Um, so, uh, uh, any, uh, any further discussion on that retreat date?
Well, we also have a city, a city meeting at night?
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm sure we would. Because it's not a, you know, a, a fifth Monday or anything that. Well, all right, uh, before I adjourn, uh, any other discussion, anything, uh, on anybody's mind right now? I want to thank everybody for attending. It, it ended in a, a pretty quick meeting. It's only seven-thirty-three. But, uh, I will call it adjourned, and, uh, thank you very much. I'll see everyone soon.
Everyone have a great week. Be safe.